Before I start, I want to address the directory issue. I know that last Sunday in Sabrina's haste to get it out quickly, she missed letters B and D. And so they are available at the front desk for you to pick up. Yes?
Letters were not only missing, they were printed back to back and you can't put them behind the dividers if there's an alphabet on both sides.
Yeah, so...
It would be a whole new directory.
Oh, that's a lot of paper. Well, okay. We're, you know, obviously, we're trying to conserve paper, but we will reprint for you if you want it.
Our L was missing.
L was missing too?
Our A was missing.
Your miss, okay. I'm gonna have her redo it. And we'll make sure that we double check it and perforate it before it goes out again.
Deb?
Yes?
It's Judy. Can't we do it digitally for those who want it digitally?
Yes, if you want it digitally, please let the front desk know.
And then we can do it that way.
That will save at least some trees. That would be helpful. Thank you, Judy. So anyway, after this meeting, Sabrina does have some copies of the updated directories at her desk with some of the missing letters included now. Okay? Alrighty, so I have the fun job of asking my advancer to advance the slide. COVID. So unfortunately, you've probably all heard, in the last month, cases have quadrupled. Orange County is no exception. We did have one staff member who tested positive, and as you know, that means that we all have to test on a weekly basis until we're able to achieve 14 days of no new positive results. So we made it through last week with no new additional residents or staff, which is awesome. We did have somebody who was off-site who came back who was positive. And so that person is quarantined. She wasn't part of our outbreak, so to speak. So that's good news. So the next, well, let me just kind of stick to the script here. So we currently have one COVID-positive resident and one COVID-positive staff member. A reminder, please wear your mask while in common area spaces. Let's mitigate the spread as much as we can. Practice good hand hygiene. Wash your hands frequently. And next, please. Did we go one too far? If you don't feel well, please notify the welcome desk or nursing immediately, and please remain in your apartment until we are able to obtain a negative rapid test for you. Remember, if you do test positive, you must isolate in your apartment for 10 days since symptoms began. It used to be since positive test. It's now since symptoms first started. I thought I fixed this. If you are exposed to someone who tests positive for COVID, so this is important. So we had a couple of family members come by, visit with residents, and then subsequently test positive. So if you're still asymptomatic, but you had close contact with someone with COVID-19, regardless of your vaccination status, you should have a series of at least two tests for COVID-19. And I do apologize because I made the fonts bigger and made more slides, but we'll stick here. It didn't save. In these situations, testing is recommended not earlier than two days after the exposure, and if negative, again, five to seven days after the exposure. So you see your son on Sunday. He calls you on Monday and says, "I tested positive." So because you saw your son on Sunday, by Tuesday, we should give you a rapid test. Even if it's negative, in another five days, because remember, there's an incubation period, we'll test you again. As long as you remain asymptomatic, you're not quarantined. As long as you're vaccinated and boosted. If you've already had COVID within the last 90 days, we're not going to test you again. You're always going to test positive on a PCR. I don't know how that didn't save. Okay, if you are exposed to someone who tests positive for COVID and you're unvaccinated or not fully boosted, you should be placed in quarantine after your exposure, even if your viral testing is negative. And again, if you're not fully vaccinated or boosted and you had close contact with somebody who tested positive for COVID, we will have to isolate you. Only if you're not vaccinated or not completely boosted.
Two boosters? Two boosters?
Two boosters is, if you're eligible. So and all of you should be eligible, depending on when you got your first series of two vaccines. Five months after was your first booster, and then five months after that is your second booster. Okay, if you're unvaccinated or not fully vaccinated and you had close contact with somebody with COVID, you can come out of quarantine after day seven following the exposure if a viral test is negative and you do not develop symptoms. If you're not tested, you have to remain in isolation the full 10 days. Will you advance? Okay, so you're going to be getting this chart in your Friday memo today. It's the same schedule as last week. So those of you with the last name that starts with A, B, or C, please come to the LLC on Monday between 10:00 a.m. and 10:20 a.m. Those whose last names start with D, E, F, G, you'll be coming to the LLC from 10:20 to 10:40. If your last name starts with H, J, or K, you're coming to the LLC from 10:40 to 11:00. If your last name starts with L, M, and O, you'll come to the LLC from 11:00 a.m. to 11:20. If your last name starts with P, Q, R, you'll come to the LLC from 11:20 to 11:40. And if your last name starts with S, T, V, W, Y, because we don't have U's and Z's, you'll come to the LLC from 11:40 to 12:00. Summer House two updates. So still in the design phase, but we've had a lot of meetings lately. So we have determined design choices, IT specifications. We are turning a large common area space into a theater for all of us to enjoy, which will be lovely. So we're still in the design phase, but we are quickly moving to plan check and permit phase through the city of Anaheim. Construction is still scheduled to begin no later than first quarter of 2023. And again, it will include 31 memory care units and then seven independent living accommodations. And I'm going to introduce you to Kim, who's going to talk about dining services.
Thank you, Debbie. Good morning, everybody. So I wanted to give you an update on where we stand with staffing. So we have a very qualified, experienced cook who is very close to coming on board, just has to get a couple of final pieces of paperwork. This cook will be our second cook for the bistro at dinner when we're able to open. And he'll also be the saute cook on the weekends, excuse me, for The Grove. He has a culinary degree, and most recently, he does catered events for, I just forgot the name of the restaurant. It's in Orange Hill in Orange. So very, very experienced, very accomplished. We're looking forward to him coming on board. I wish I had the same good news about servers. We're still looking for two servers and don't even have any in the pipeline at this moment. So it's really servers at this point that's holding us up from opening the bistro for dinner. On Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, we're going to be closing The Grove for dinner. And the reason why Ethan is going to, Ethan and Maria are gonna thoroughly clean our brand-new carpet, and a vendor's gonna come in and seal it so it will be protected from stains. So the carpet will be shampooed on Wednesday. It'll dry. It'll be sealed that night. And then once everything's dry, the furniture will be put back on Thursday, and we'll reopen Thursday in time for birthday show dinner.
Okay. I want to thank everyone for filling out our entree survey. We got 103 back, which is a wonderful response. The purpose of the survey was to find out what are your most popular entrees so that we can try to avoid putting both of them on in the same night where you really have to try to decide, "What am I gonna pick tonight?" And it's also helpful for us to see what you feel is popular. It's helpful for menu planning. So thank you so much for filling that out. And then I want to thank our resident mathematician, Raleigh Maxon, for tabulating all of those surveys for me. And if you're interested in seeing the results, I do have copies with me. I'll have them at the end of the meeting. What would you think is the most popular entree? Exactly, baby back ribs. I was surprised at that result, but baby back ribs was number one. And what would you think is the least popular?
Liver.
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 You would think liver, but it's veal. Veal, so. So again, I do have copies of this if you're interested. And thank you so much for filling it out. It really helps us do the best menu for you. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, Kim. Next, I'd like to welcome Ethan, our main instructor.
Hello, everybody. Hope everybody's doing good today. Just wanted to update you on a few items that we had discussed previously. The biggest one is the hot water recirculating system. We do have a good update on it. We found that the pumps were undersized for the system. So we are in the process of sizing those up and getting them installed in the next few weeks here. It will be a process. It's gonna take probably about a month to go through because we have to check the whole system out, make sure that nothing was shut off or backed up for any reason. So just give us a little time, and we will be coming around to everybody's unit to check to see how it's running, making sure that everything's operating properly for that. Let's see. The next big thing was the water conservation that I know a lot of you have concerns about. So recently, Deb and I got approved some new equipment for cleaning the campus, which is basically a giant floor scrubbing machine. It's a ride-along machine that uses minimal water and cleaning solutions. So we're not gonna be springing down the pavers anymore and wasting a lot of water. And this basically cleans as it goes, and it also does a vacuum and a bit of drying. So it's very minimal water. We're gonna cut back by like 75% of our water usage just on cleaning alone. So that's a good implementation that we have there. Next thing I want to go over was security. I know that we have had some issues with the garage. People getting in there and following people into the garage, and there's concerns about people getting into the building. And we have had recently a couple of incidents. So what I've done is gone through and collected a proposal to secure all the entries within the garage. That will include all the doors going into the basement elevators, the stairwells. So anytime you're gonna come in the garage and you take the elevator up, you're gonna need your follow-up to access it. So you should always have your follow-up anyway, so there shouldn't be anything that would be an issue for you. So that should be installed and probably by the end of next month as well. All right? If anybody has any questions on it or concerns, feel free to contact me, and we can go over it. So we're also looking at the courtyard fountain. You know, we just finished with the Serenity Garden recently. I think everybody was pretty happy with how it came out. So we're gonna try and do something also with the main fountain. Not exactly sure what we're gonna have going on yet, but we're, they're in the works with some ideas. If anybody has anything they'd like to contribute or share towards it, please feel free to email me or contact me. We can definitely take a look at it, but that is definitely something we're gonna be working on over the next couple of months. And last but not least, finally, we got the Red Chair Lounge fireplace back up and running. So hopefully, you can enjoy that in some cool summer evenings coming up. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ethan. Next up is our chaplain, Les. You wanna kind of make your way up here? Well, Les is making his way up here. Any questions in the meantime? I still have.
I just would like for the dining department to revisit the brunches and the special meals. Guests are charged so much more than we are, and I did not feel like that the Mother's Day brunch was worth the expense that it cost. And then with the new thing scheduled, they're also being charged tax, which we have not had done before. I think we are discouraging people to invite their families with the increases in prices at $5 a point. I do not think the brunch that was offered on Mother's Day was a $30 brunch.
Do you want to address that in a moment?
That's true of all.
It's great to be here. And it's great to see a wonderful turnout, and I feel honored to be able to talk about what we're doing with chapel services and spiritual care. My name is Les Bishop. I'm the Director of Spiritual Services, the chaplain here. And I will talk for just a few minutes on what is happening in the spiritual care department. I'd like to begin by offering a working definition of spirituality. I think those of you who question, "What is spirituality? What do we mean by the term spiritual?" I think that's a very valid question. The working definition that we use, spirituality is the acknowledgement and often, the experience of the transcendent. And by transcendent, I mean something or someone that is above and beyond us. Add to this the awareness and understanding of the inner life or the inner being, which includes a sense of self-awareness. So it's the transcendence connecting with the inner life, above and beyond connecting with the within. Spirituality includes the notion that there is more to life. There has got to be more to life than what we can understand with the senses alone. There's more going on than what we see and experience here. Often, but not always, people express their spirituality through their religious beliefs and practice. Our religious faith can define for us what is sacred and therefore help us to express our spirituality. For many, their religious belief empowers them to experience connection with the transcendent through ceremonial traditions and sacramental practices. Although religion is different than spirituality, religion can include, or spirituality can include, religion. And religion can be a vehicle for spiritual direction and spiritual expression. Front Porch and Walnut Village in particular has included in its definition of spirituality the need for connection to our inner life, to others, and what we hold to be sacred, the need for meaning, which is balancing of personal desires and necessities with the needs of the world, and the need for purpose, which is awareness of our role in creation and the ability to take an active part in the direction of our own life at any time during our life. Connection, meaning, purpose. Now, most of you have received the Religious and Spirituality Preferences Survey. And those of you who haven't given them back to me, I would really appreciate you filling those out and returning them. And if you haven't gotten one of those surveys, let me know, and I'll be sure to see that you get one. The survey so far has yielded some very interesting and wonderful results. We have received 59 responses representing 72 residents, which is 43.6% of the residents in independent living. Responses have included a request for more time with the chaplain, appreciation for chapel services, requests for communion more often, requests for transportation to weekend worship services off-campus, which we will again provide as transportation staffing permits. Others have said that their spiritual needs are being met outside of Walnut Village. We offer spiritual care, and you have every right to expect the very best in spiritual care. I also believe that people, you know what you need. You don't need me or anyone else to tell you what you need. You know what you need. And our job, my job with regard to spirituality and spiritual care is to address those things. The purpose of the survey is to find out your preferences, and not everybody has the same preferences. What would you prefer? What would enhance your spiritual life currently in times of crisis or at the end of life? Would you benefit from prayers? Last rites if you're at the end of life? Would you like me to bring in your own clergy? Or perhaps find you a priest or rabbi? I would do any of those things for you if that was your request and that was your need. Or would you simply like to be left alone? We will respect your preferences. You know what you need. Let me know. Chapel activities during the month of June include our ongoing programs. Christian worship services are offered weekly in the chapel on Sunday mornings at 10:30. Walnut Village has an inter-denominational gathering. Walnut Village Church is an inter-denominational gathering that functions under the auspices of Walnut Village and under the leadership of a church council, which determines the direction of Walnut Village Church. In our survey thus far, people have requested some specific topics to be addressed in sermons, which I will endeavor to address when topics requested are within scope and understanding of my personal practice and understanding. One of the things that we will be doing in chapel is the celebration of Pentecost Sunday, which is June 5th. Pentecost is a major Christian holiday. As you know, we will be acknowledging that day, that holiday of celebration. We also currently have regular Bible studies that are ongoing. These are discussion-oriented studies based on the readings from the previous Sunday morning. People express their own ideas, and we have some very good and very powerful discussions. Others like to be there and listen and glean from the discussion. The idea is not to answer all the questions. I'm much more interested in questioning all the answers. I believe spiritual growth comes not just from finding answers, but more from struggling with the questions. That is some of what is happening in spiritual care. And of course, I'm always available for conversation, counsel, or discussion. Front Porch and Walnut Village in particular makes a strong commitment to spiritual care based on the recognition that all people are spiritual to some extent. Through our spiritual care programs, our goal is to enhance the quality of life of every person by building and deepening community, encouraging meaningful connections, supporting people through the grieving process, and providing resources for purposeful and meaningful life at any age.
Thank you, Chaplain Les. And now I'd like to invite our Director of Life Enrichment, Judy Marshup.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. As you can see, I'm trying to update our Veterans' Wall. If you were a new, or if you are a new resident, you would have received something in your box and sometimes at your door asking for this particular information. "I need a photo, and I need to know the service that you were in and your years of service." I've only received one back. I want to have our wall updated by Memorial Day. So if you intend to give me a photo and an update, please get it to me right away. There are extra sheets in the post for you to complete. If you'll notice and you've gone by the Veterans' Wall, you will see that I have marked those residents whose lives have ended, and they are marked, "Rest in Peace." I will remove those as soon as I redo the wall. But I wanted to give you at least a month to view and maybe say goodbye to some of our very wonderful friends. So I promise you, with the help of a couple residents, I will have that wall updated. As you can see, 7:15 in the evening, I'm having a National Geographic series. It's been very successful. Residents seem to truly enjoy it. It will continue through June, and that begins at 7:15. Doing challenge games. If you'll notice in the breezeway, we have a grandson of a resident, Matthew Peterson, who, for his Eagle badge, created this wonderful, full-size outdoor games. There's three different games. And I do that at 11 o'clock today, following this meeting. So please come and join. It's really a lot of fun. We are going to Pachanga on Monday. We are also going to be able to do the La Ramada Symphony on Sunday. But in order to do that, if you're planning to go to either one of these outings, you have to come to the clinic tomorrow between the hours of 12 and 1:00 to be tested. Yes. Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday. Sunday between 12 and 1:00 to be tested. If you are not going, please let me know so that I can give the ticket to somebody else. There are no tickets available in the orchestra for Sunday. There's no additional tickets available. So please, please come without me having to call and remind you between the hours of 12 and 1:00 on Sunday. Memorial Day, which is May 30th. I will be here on Memorial Day. We will do bingo at 1:30 in the LLC. And at 3:00, I will have the South Coast Brass Entertainment. That will be, we're gonna do it in the Bistro Courtyard closer to the bistro area where we have shade. It's a great group. You've enjoyed it. We will do a short service prior to that, and then we'll probably have some ice cream treats for you. And then Memorial Day, regular, it's regular hours for your dinner. We have lots of other things going on. Please sign up in the post. And I'm calling everybody to remind them to come to the particular activities they've signed up for. But last night, I found three things out. One, I don't have to remind you to come to something you want to do. Two, I don't have to serve any food. And three, you'll stay up past your bedtime. So thank you, everybody, and thank you for coming last night. Yes?
Wait, 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 wait. Wait, wait, I, although they can hear you, I can't.
If you guard to the military wall, if we don't have a picture of our military service, will you... will you take one of us?
I will. But the gentleman who is a veteran did give me a photo and it's all ready to go up. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And for those of you who didn't attend last night, did you know that Judy has been the Rotarian of the Year, the Small Business Person of the Year? What other things have you? Many awards, many, many awards, as you can imagine, and all well-deserved. And we're so lucky to have her. Resident Services, I don't, I know, all of you know Sandy or Sandra. She used to be in the Wellbeing Center with Ryan. She's our Resident Services Director. She is here for anything you need, big and small. So please, if you have a technological issue, she's really good at technology, Wi-Fi, computers, but use her for other things. If you need to find a specific vendor, if you're having difficulty filling out some paperwork, feel free to reach out to Sandy. She's here to serve you and make your life easier. So just wanted to remind you that she is available for you. She can assist you with finding solutions with a network of service providers. She can provide general case management and provide education to you regarding service availability, application procedures, client rights, et cetera. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan.
I'll keep this brief. First up, I couldn't help but notice three of our top 10 favorite foods were fried. Don't get me wrong, I love fried food too, but we just keep it even, right? Keep it balanced. We gotta indulge, but we gotta do a little work, work it up too. That being said, I think Judy has something on the calendar for June that if you won't come to me, I might come to you one morning. You'll see what I mean on that date. So just, I'm gonna leave that there and hold that close to the vest, just to keep you guessing a little bit. Also, thank you to those that played walking bingo with us yesterday. Hopefully had a good time. It was a nice day. We'll do that every couple months and hopefully we can encourage some more active, active games like that. So, some news in the gym. We have some new equipment ordered actually and it's being delivered next week. So we have new resistance equipment coming. If you're in the gym and you're familiar with all the resistance machines, there's new equipment coming. We have to remove the old stuff, so Ethan and his team are going to help us take it out on Monday. And because we have to pull some of the stuff out of the closets as well, we're actually going to close the gym on Monday at noon. The delivery will be early Tuesday morning. We can put Humpty Dumpty back together, put all our stuff back in, and then we're going to reopen the gym at 12:00 on Tuesday. The pool won't be affected, so the pool will still be open, just that gym 24-hour closure and then we'll be back in up and running. The equipment is, it adapts to everyone. It'll be a lot more user-friendly in case we have any limitations with our range of motion. It'll be more user-friendly, like I said, and it'll be more adaptable. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. Also, well, just some upcoming things in June. We did restart back up with our off-campus walks. The signup sheet's in the post already, so we're going to walk to Hilltop Park in Signal Hill per request and suggestion. So thank you, Judy Phillips, for the suggestion. So that's the plan for June. And we also have the return of our Drumming Circle. If any of you participated in our Drumming Circle prior to the pandemic, it's back. Jose's coming back. We're very excited about that. If you haven't come to the Drum Circle ever before, you're in luck. We would definitely love to have you. No musical experience necessary. No musical, music experience necessary. And you know, it's just a good time. There's a lot of different benefits for a Drum Circle. Different, different research with, you know, increased levels, you know, decreased levels of depression, reduces anxiety. It's also good for range of motion, right? We've got all the drums, we've got all kinds of different accessories. Just bring yourself an open mind and hopefully a willingness to have a good time. And we hope to see you there. All that information will be on the June calendar and that's it. Thanks, everyone.
Good job. Thank you, Ryan. Susan, if you'd like to come up. Susan's our Director of Sales and Marketing, has been with Front Porch 12 years? 10 years? 12 years? Actually commuted from Fountain Valley to Pasadena for 10 years. Can you believe that?
Hi, everybody. Good morning. Well, the marketing department has been very busy getting it up and running and hopefully getting you some new residents. So some of the efforts that we use to do that are direct mail pieces, e-blast, obviously calling all the different prospects and reaching out to you also for referrals. So one of the first things that's coming out in June is our large direct mail piece. So there's going to be about 6,000 pieces sent. It's in a newsletter-type format. I have chosen Ryan to be one of my highlighted individuals because I feel that fitness is extremely important to all of you to keep you active. And he has some wonderful things. I was excited to see the drum coming up in June. That I, that I encourage you all to, to go to. And then I picked resident Kathy Stanek to be highlighted. So some of you have already been highlighted in some of these pieces, so we're just trying to do a different focus. And then we are also going to be announcing the West Coast Pops Concert. Judy is part of that for you as residents. So this is a combination of residents and our prospects. So our prospects, we will, in marketing, will have a little private party beforehand while you guys are all eating dinner, but, doing tours, but that's going to be on July 17th. The other thing as far as referrals, I put a flyer out about a month ago and I have gotten some referrals from a couple of you. So if, if you have friends or relatives even that you would like to be here at Village or, well, not Village, sorry. It's been 10 years, that, that you let me know because there is a $5,000 credit that you would receive after they've lived here 90 days. And that's quite a hefty incentive. A lot of the other Front Porch communities do not offer that much. So you're very lucky that we have, we have gotten permission to do that for you. Then the other part is dealing with occupancy. So we are close to 90%. It hovers back and forth all the time. Our goal really is to be 100%. That is extremely difficult to make, so hopefully 98% by the end of this year. Right now, we have about 16 accommodations available. We have two move-in individuals. One, Mr. Wadde's already moved in this month and Joan Sorge is moving in on Monday. And then in June, we, currently we have two, but I'm expecting to get a deposit for one that's going to be a rather quick move. So we will have three in June and then one already set for July. So I, I know I've seen several of you when we're out doing tours and you've all been so welcoming to all of the individuals that are considering, you know, considering moving to this wonderful community. And, you know, just keep it up. Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks. I need that. Thank you, Susan. $5,000 off. Just think if you refer five people, you could just go rent-free for half a year. Be nice. Okay. I think I have the sad news. Susan talked to you about who is moving in. And May 17th for us was a little difficult here at Walnut Village. We lost two of our wonderful residents. We lost Barbara Fenters on May 17th. And then about an hour and a half later, we lost Carol Warmer. So hopefully that's it. And I'm sure that, you know, I know that Carol's family wants some type of a memorial service and they're working with Judy on that, so we'll make sure that you're notified. And so basically, I think I just have a couple of save the dates if I can get there. Okay. So May 30th, of course, the Memorial Day Barbecue Dinner during regular dinner service in the Veranda Grove. May 30th, Memorial Day Celebration featuring South Coast Brass Entertainment from 3:00 to 4:00 in the Bistro Courtyard. And then June 19th, Father's Day Dinner from 2:00 PM to 3:30. So, and then I will go ahead, Ellen, and address your issue. So regarding the tax, Corporate had sent us for the new Appendix A and B, a template that they wanted us to use. And so some of the communities are charging tax. I will reach out to Corporate and see because we have not done so in the past. If it's absolutely mandatory, if it's not, I'll go ahead and correct and reissue a new Appendix A to you. And then Kim and I will go ahead and sit down with Chef to discuss special meals, expectations, enhancements, and perhaps if possible, we can get you all, or you can view a proposed special meal menu prior to the event to see if that's something that you feel would be worth bringing your guests in for. Okay. Who else has questions? Judy's ready with the microphone. She's ready to go. Well, so Earl Howe asked me if I remember the song Duke of Earl. Do y'all want to sing that instead? Duke, 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 Duke of Earl, Earl. Remember? No? No? Okay. Never mind. Well, in that case, if we don't have any further questions, it's always nice to see you guys. And I think our next foray where we all get together will be Resident Council in a couple weeks. So we'll see you then.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My name is Ed Leonard, in 384. And we have not gone, my wife and I have not come to the open house meetings. And I'm here today just to see what should be brought up. I don't know, sometimes you bring up things in meetings that are better talked to individual department heads. Now, for example, if we would like something on the bistro takeout, like some things that have been removed, some things that have been added, is this the forum to bring up something like that? Or would it be best to talk to the?
It'd be more expedient to go directly to the department head, to Kim Norton.
Okay.
And then we also, just so you know, Ed, also have the, I don't know if it's open to everybody, the Food Committee. It happens every other Tuesday or once a month on, so it's this Tuesday, 4th Tuesday. So this Tuesday, 11 o'clock in the Community Room on the second floor. But I think the fastest way to express what you would like to see is go directly to Kim. And Kim, I don't know if you guys have like a little suggestion or suggestion box? So you, where is the suggestion box?
In the salad bar area.
So there's a suggestion box and in the salad bar area, so of the Grove. So if you, and that would pertain to the bistro also, in the bistro we would like to see. And you can certainly write a note that way if you can't find Kim or if Kim's off that day or what have you. And you want to get that thought out before you forget.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ed.
You're welcome.
Can I say something too? On the June calendar, you will see that we are bringing back cocktails, not with Nadine, but cocktails and chatter with Deb. And then it's on a Wednesday night. Cannot remember the exact date, but that too will be an opportunity for you to meet with our Executive Director one-on-one and tell her, you know, how wonderful we are or if you have a problem or a concern. And that will be on the calendar in June.
Isba.
You gonna do COVID testing on Memorial Day?
Well, if we, hopefully we won't have another positive this week, in which case we won't have to do it. We could, we could, we could do Tuesday. Worst-case scenario, because a lot of you may be out with family, so. And regarding cocktails and chatter with me, feel free to just also come into my office if you've got something that you want to discuss. But cocktails is always a good opportunity too. Why not? Okay, I'm coming.
I'm surprised nobody mentioned the list of prices and how they've been increased for services that we usually expected when we came here. Because so many of us chose to come here because of Care Center, which closed and is not available anymore. Now we have to, it sounds like we have to pay just to have somebody come up to our room and see if we're all right. And I'm not quite sure what I'm going to have to be paying for. I paid when I had caregivers for a month's service over $500 a month. And I'm wondering now, if I'm going, I'm going in for surgery, will I have to pay to have someone come up and check on me when I return from the hospital? I, I just have questions about this kind of thing because we were always available to talk to a nurse before. Will we have to pay now?
I, let me reread some of the paperwork because this happened when I was first starting. And I believe you're grandfathered in, but don't quote me. I think you guys are grandfathered in, but if you were to move to Summer House, you would pay for the care charges. If you remain in the village, I believe you're grandfathered in, but I'll double-check on Susan, do you, can you clarify right away? You got it, so.
Okay. I checked with nursing staff, with Pam, regarding having someone just check on my husband once a day while I am out of town. And the cost for that group is $530 for a week, even if they just come in and check and see if he's alive.
As far as the grandfathering in, as far as the grandfathering in, no, I believe that was not part of it. But if you're going to the hospital and having a surgery, they still are having where the Wellness Center staff will come and check on you. That is no charge for, for that, if you're coming back from the hospital, you know, for, for a period. I think here it's seven days. Other, other communities throughout Front Porch, maybe five, and some have done away with it altogether. So you are still receiving quite a, quite a few benefits, but the Truliers Package, that is something that you had, you had already in, in place based on the other. Summer House was the new one that had gone into effect May 15th.
Oh, is that right? Okay. According to Susan, there was always a charge, a care charge, unless you went to Summer House, that was all inclusive. So keep in mind, you know, obviously it costs money to hire caregivers, nurses, and I don't know what, you know, your, the sales process was when you moved in. Yes, Ellen?
Just reading this, it says Village Care. Seven-day support option for residents when you return to residential living from an acute setting, example, hospital, care center. The services are listed below. If a resident does not utilize the care for the entire period, the cost will be prorated. Services may be substituted for specific resident needs. The fee is $530. Daily monitoring by nurse, two-hour checks provided by the nursing staff, seven days of medication management, seven days of assistance with activities of daily living, seven days of daily meal delivery, and assistance for medical appointment, scheduling, and transportation.
Right. So that's what's included in that. So you do get full ADL care, medication management, two-hour checks. So it is obviously a labor-intensive service.
But that $530.
For seven days, but you're getting two-hour checks. So, you know, if you had 24-hour care, it'd be significantly higher than that. So if you don't need those services, Judy, the full seven days, it's just prorated on a daily basis. So if you only need four days, it'd be the 530 divided by seven times four is how it would be charged.
The last time I called the nurses, the nurse told me, well, why don't you go to urgent? While I was in so much pain, I couldn't drive. My family was... My family was out of town and it was like midnight and I'm gonna call some, another resident.
I'm sorry to hear that. I'd like to know.
Come up, he wouldn't even come up and take my temperature. So I.
Why don't we have, why don't we have?
What am I gonna be charged for?
Why don't we have a conversation, you and I? I want to find out what day that happened, if you remember, so that I can go talk to that staff member. Anything else? Again, my door is always open, so please bring any kind of specific challenges, concerns, issues to me so that we can address it. If that's that, I guess we'll see you at the next one. Have a good Friday, everyone, have a great weekend.